One time we called EMS.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Want to call the meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners for May the eighth, two thousand twenty-three to order. We'd like to welcome those who are in attendance in our audience this evening, and it looks really well in our audience this evening, I might add. But we do want to thank each and every one for coming this way, as well as those who are joining us by TV. And so at this time, we're going to have our invocation. Pastor Michael Medlock with Resurrection Hope Church of God is going to lead us in that, and we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Robbie Wilkie will lead us in that this evening. So Pastor.
Sing a prayer song. Father of life, pour out his grace on you. May you fill his hand in everything you do, and be strengthened by the things he brings you through. This is my prayer for you. May the son of God be Lord in all your ways. May he shepherd you the length of all your days. In your heart, may he receive the praise. This is my prayer for you. Despite how simple it may sound, pray that his grace will abound, motivate everything you do. May the fullness of his love be shared through you. May his spirit comfort you, make you strong. May he discipline you gently when you're wrong. In your heart, may he give you a song. This is my prayer for you. May Jesus be Lord in all your ways. May he shepherd you the length of all your days. In your heart, may he receive the praise. This is my prayer for you. This is my prayer for you.
Please face the flag, pink and salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor. Great job.
You're fine. You're fine. That was a blessing.
I don't know about you folks, but I've never had anybody sing a prayer for me, so I just want to say thank you, Pastor, for that.
Amen.
Enjoyed it immensely. Yes, sir. God bless you. Moving along in our meeting, uh, do we have any amendments to our agenda this evening? No amendments, so what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county manager has presented.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. And our first item on our agenda this evening is a Moving Mountains Award for the Foothills Robotics Six Eight 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 Group. And our county manager, Mr. Duncan, is going to lead us in that. I'm sure those folks are here. I'll say a bunch of six eight eights and the eight eight eights.
Yep. Forward and I'll, I'll take the podium if you don't mind. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and members of the audience, y'all have recently created the Moving Mountains Award to recognize young men and women here in Caldwell County. And this team is no exception to that. They've overcome some pretty heavy obstacles. This robotics team is a nonprofit robotics team for students eighth through the twelfth grade. And on the way home from their first competition of the season, they were, their team was involved in an accident. Robot was damaged severely. And within two weeks, they were able to put this back together after raising money from the community and put all their stuff, and were able to turn around and compete and did very well. Today, we have with us team managers Dean Sheridan, Joseph Papoli, Addy Papoli, Nate Martinaccio.
Said that wrong. I know I did.
Close enough. And we also have Ian Martinaccino, Aaron Martinaccio, Aubrey Hearn, and Lillian Sebastian. I want to say congratulations to y'all. Thank you very much. And I'll ask the Commissioners if anything they would like to comment. Commissioner Wilkie brought this to our attention. If you want to go first.
I just happened to see this on the news, um, program for these, this young team and all that they've done. And I was just so impressed by their perseverance and their determination to still compete. The robot was pretty, pretty badly damaged and they didn't give up. And that just spoke volumes to me about the character of these young men and women on this team and how they bounce back. And, and I was, some of you may have seen it, but I was kind of reminded of the, the movie October Sky and how they faced obstacles, but they were able to overcome those and go on to work for NASA and, and do great things in the rocket program. So I'm expecting great things out of this group from Caldwell County and doing great things with robotics, and I know you will. And I just appreciate your determination and, and your willingness to, to move on. The teams they compete about, compete with, from my understanding, have huge sponsorships from corporations and stuff. And they get all kinds of monies. This team puts together things with what they have available and is still able to compete with this, this group of people that they have to go against. So I, it's, it's my pleasure to have y'all here tonight, and I think you're well deserving of this award.
Commissioners, anybody else like to say anything? All right, I'm gonna say one other thing. Echoing everything that Robbie said, we spend a lot of time recognizing athletes. We have signing days. We talk about how wonderful that is. We fail to recognize the craftsmanship and creativity here in our own community, and this is just a little bit of trying to rectify that. Thank y'all for everything you do. Appreciate it. We've got. Okay. I'm gonna get all these wrong. So we have some stuff for all of y'all. I'm gonna let the parents hand these out so I don't get everybody wrong. Fans and corners. Y'all have anything you want to say?
We just, we're brand new to the, to the county. We were in Hillbran last year and all of us aged out. Our son Aiden, it's been like the joy of his life to be on the team, so we knew that we couldn't let the team just dissolve. So working for Caldwell County, so we brought the team here and we tried to pull together a team and try to make it work this season. And we had some setbacks, but you know, we just appreciate that everybody supported us the way we did and we're very thankful.
All right, so next we have Dino DiBenardi, and he is coming this evening for a proclamation of Public Safety Professionals Month. And we've got a lot of public safety folks here, and so we just want to begin that, I do, by thanking each and every one for what you do for our community. I know there's a lot of volunteer firefighters here, paid professional EMS, rescue, fire marshal's office, and the list just goes on and on for those that, that meet the needs of our county, and we certainly appreciate each and every one, and don't take it for granted. So.
As you mentioned last month, Chairman Kirk.
Commissioner Potter both mentioned. They look forward to a proclamation. We noticed that, uh, obviously every month, there's generally proclamations for an of the month, whether that be a profession or a subset of the population. With the fire service, May fourth, of course, is International Firefighters Day. Telecommunicators Week was last month. EMS Week is next month. Uh, we also have Law Enforcement Day, uh, in January of each year. And we felt as though it would be appropriate, uh, to do a month-long, uh, recognition or celebration of sorts for the profession of public safety, which encompasses many different, uh, aspects of, uh, safety, whether that be fire, law enforcement, EMS, rescue, uh, even clinical settings. So we are asking, um, this month with this proclamation to designate specifically May of two thousand twenty-three as Public Safety Professionals Month, and we hope to do this annually before. So I will read the proclamation before we move forward. Public Safety Professionals Month proclamation to designate the month of May, two thousand twenty-three, as Public Safety Professionals Month. Whereas Telecommunicators Week is observed the second full week of April each year, and whereas Emergency Medical Services is observed each May, and whereas Firefighters Day is observed May fourth of each year, and whereas Law Enforcement Appreciation Day is observed January ninth of each year, and whereas the members of the public safety community are always at the ready to provide lifesaving care and protection to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency services dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, greatly improves the quality of life, stands as a priority to the citizens and visitors, and ensures the ability of freedom of movement. And whereas the public safety community consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas public safety professionals, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of public safety professionals by designating the month of May as Public Safety Professionals Month. Now, therefore, I, Chairman Randy Church and the Caldwell County Commissioners, in recognition of this profession, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand twenty-three, as Public Safety Professionals Month.
Having heard the proclamation, I'll make the motion that we adopt as has been presented. Any other comment or discussion?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank you guys as well. Um, I know we, a lot of times we take our daily lives for granted and we forget how important it is to recognize the people who are out there every day, um, protecting our community, whether it be in EMS or fire Sheriff's Office or law enforcement, particularly the dispatchers. I, I, I want to try to work hard to recognize, continue to recognize our nine-one-one telecommunicators because I think sometimes we have a tendency to forget they're there because they are behind the scenes. But without them, none of you guys could do your job either. But I thank you again from the bottom of my heart for all you do.
All right.
I'd like to add to that. Um, this past week, last week, I had a lady tell me that her husband had a heart attack. And she said, you just don't realize how important first responders are until you need them. And so, um, we do take it for granted a lot of times, but we certainly appreciate all the efforts of the men and women here that serve our community so well.
I would ditto both of these gentlemen and, and just say thank you for your service and dedication to Caldwell County. Thank you.
All right. And then I'll call the question. All in favor of approving this proclamation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And we do, again, thank each one in our emergency services for what they do for us. And we appreciate each and every one. If you'll just get your scanner sometime and listen, you'll, you'll know how, how busy they are.
It's a little crazy.
So next, we're going to have some presentations of our Public Safety Professionals Month awards, and so.
I will go ahead and apologize to my staff and some of the fire services. Um, we did not tell them what they were coming here for. So this year, for part of, uh, the recognition, we're going to recognize specific members within emergency services. That would be Caldwell County Emergency Services, as well as in the, uh, fire and rescue community, both paid and volunteer. The first component will be departmental awards, uh, which will include our five divisions with Communications, EMS, Fire, Emergency Management, and Safety. Uh, we only have a couple awards, uh, right at six, and then we will be transitioning. I'll turn it over to Jonathan Cook, our EMS chief. And at that point, if we could have a representative from each of the fire departments come up as well, that way you could be here when, uh, your staff comes up and/or when we, uh, give you the award. So I'll just ask that when you come up, you can, I guess if you guys are okay with it, uh, they'll stand in front of you and then get one picture at the end. That way we can, uh, knock it all out at once. So our first one, who I'm sure, uh, is going to kill me later for this, but, Fire and Emergency Management Employee of the Year, Michael Parnell, awarded annually by the department to the member who sets an example of performance and fulfilling his or her capacity as a member of the Fire and Emergency Management Divisions, above and beyond that of his or her peers. Personnel are peer nominated and selected by the Emergency Services Command Staff in this respect. And I will also add that he is graduating with his associates in fire protection technology. And, uh, he has done a tremendous amount over the last year, um, also now gaining very shortly his Level Three Fire Inspector. So we'd like to recognize Michael Parnell. Our Paramedic of the Year, Michaela Murphy. I will tell you, uh, this young lady, uh, every time I walk into a base, if she is not on a call, is studying. One thing I absolutely despise, uh, but is absolutely necessary in this profession. Also awarded annually by the department to the member who sets the example of performance and fulfilling his or her capacity as a field technician, above and beyond that of his or her peers. This person, this personnel, uh, that receives this award is purely nominated based off of peer recommendations. So this is a award by her peers. So Michaela Murphy, Paramedic of the Year. Officer of the Year, Captain George Durfer, awarded annually by the department to the officer who sets an example of exemplary performance and fulfilling his or her capacity as a field officer and exhibiting actions above and beyond that of his or her peers. Again, personnel are peer nominated, and in this respect, uh, the captain was nominated for his undying, uh, dedicated support for his staff. Every single person that voted, uh, brought up the fact that he goes above and beyond every day to make sure, even if it is a simple phone call or stopping by, including, by the way, uh, the hospitals. EMT of the Year, Mason McDonald. EMT of the Year, Mason McDonald, awarded annually by the department to the member who sets an example of performance and fulfilling his or her capacity as a field EMT, above and beyond that of his peers. Mason seems to be, uh, on a record here going two for two, uh, with this. So Mason McDonald also nominated and selected by his peers. Rookie of the Year is a, uh, award that I take pretty, um, special. Uh, you know that in emergency services, um, there is a, quite a big revolving door. Uh, people come in quite rapidly, and being able to make a name for yourself as a rookie, I think, really speaks volumes, uh, for the employee. Rookie of the Year, Kate Johnson, is also awarded to, by the department to the probationary member and/or member who has less than one year of service within the agency, who also finds a way to set an example of performance and fulfilling his or her capacity as a field technician. And again, this personnel, uh, the personnel that receives this award is peer nominated and selected. And anyone with any time in emergency services has heard this name before. Our Tim Miller Award for Excellence has for years, uh, since it became an award, uh, shortly after his death, is awarded for independent humanitarian actions taken over the course of the year by personnel within the department, thereby actively promoting the welfare, happiness, and well-being of the communities we serve. Tim Miller actively served Caldwell County and the citizens and visitors to the state of North Carolina up until his untimely death. Relating to the EMS division, this member should display similar actions, including but not limited to having shown superior patient care, an effective advocate for patients and their families, working with peers to foster, foster a positive work environment, demonstrating professionalism and interacting with patients, their families, and other medical professionals. This is where this, uh, paramedic excels. This paramedic also demonstrates his commitment to the continuing education of professional development. Paul Williams, Paramedic. The final award in the EMS Division is Employee of the Year. This, uh, award, uh, can go to any employee, whether or not that is a credentialed employee on the medical side, fireside, emergency management, communications, or, uh, general non-credentialed employee. It aimed to recognize those employees who have made significant contributions in the area related to improvement of operations and overall, uh, departmental sustainability and continuity. This employee consistently demonstrates the spirit of teamwork by offering support to fellow employees whenever a need arises for a collective effort in accomplishing a task or goal. And I would say this employee has put in more hours, uh, than anyone in the department, including myself, which is an accomplishment in and of itself. Most people, uh, see us in uniform all the time, and I think he lives in his, uh, paramedic Ethan Miller. I also want to recognize the awards within our Communications Division, which were issued during Telecommunicators Week. Telecommunicator Dawn Harden, uh, received Call Taker of the Year, as well as Employee of the Year. Ryan Dula received Supervisor of the Year, and Bailey Quick received Telecommunicator of the Year. Are any of the telecommunicators here? Excellent. And that is all of those. I'm gonna turn it over to Jonathan right quick.
Fire chief, you want to come up and stand with him? We're gonna do, uh, the Save Awards and.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll do, we're gonna first do what we call the Certificate of Excellence. This is a few we've, we've chosen, just very unique calls that the crews went above and beyond, and we had good patient outcomes with. The first was a call that actually just recently occurred, so I've got a little summary. This crew responded to a traumatic event with a elderly individual who went into cardiac arrest. The crew was able to start CPR and they obtained an airway. ALS treatment was performed.
ALS treatment was performed and blood was given on this call. The patient regained the pulse after the blood and ALS was administered. And they were taken to the ER where they were promptly taken to the operating room. And as of today, they are still doing well. This crew is April Bivens and David Kraus. And this was a call that happened yesterday. And the captain that was there to administer the blood was Josh Welker. I don't believe Josh is here. Let's see. This second call was a call for a 64-year-old male patient with possible food poisoning. This is a call that's very easily to kind of just overlook and take them onto the hospital, maybe give them some nausea medication, but this crew didn't. This crew went above and beyond. This patient was having some lower abdominal pain and pelvic pain. And the crew decided to perform a EKG on this patient and found the patient to be showing signs of a heart attack. And the patient was taken to the cath lab. They were found to be having a dissecting abdominal aortic aneurysm, which is a severe life threat. And without this crew being able to do a 12 lead to find this, the patient probably would have had a very bad outcome. This patient was transported directly to a local trauma facility where he underwent surgery. This crew is Chrissy Hopkins and Sydney Yance. Next, we'll do our Save Awards. We have a total of five of these. Caldwell County is very blessed to have great fire and EMS in our county. We have a cardiac survival rate, which means if you go into cardiac arrest in Caldwell County, you have a 14% chance of walking out of the hospital. The national average is 9%, so it's high. A ROSC rate, which is we regain a pulse on the scene, is 41% compared to the national average of 30. This goes to our great fire departments, individuals, first responders, paramedics, and all the equipment we have to help. This first case was a 10-year-old female. I don't believe she could be here tonight. We were in touch with her, and I don't believe she was feeling too well to be able to come. But this was a 10-year-old female from Gamel. The paramedics on the scene were Kenny Hall, Bree Pennell, and Brooke Rosear, if y'all will come up, and the Gamel Fire Department as well. This patient, their patient went into cardiac arrest and had a successful outcome and is now home with their family. So this next was a patient with the Lenore Fire Department, Paramedic Amber Outlaw. Date of arrest was January 10th, 2022, and this patient was discharged neurologically intact, January 15th, 2022. Next will be the Lenore Fire Department again, and Paramedic Brian Crump. This patient had a cardiac arrest date of February 3rd, 2022, and they were discharged from the hospital on February 21st. This next patient had a cardiac arrest and two crews responded to it. This was February 9th, 2022, and was discharged on March the 4th, 22. This is Paramedic Joe Patron, Paramedic Taylor Fredericks, Paramedic Mackenzie Thompson, and Sergeant Daniel Line. And our last award tonight would be a cardiac arrest that occurred just last month, late in April. Patient was discharged on May the 5th. This will be the Granite Falls Fire Department, along with Paramedic Abby Davis, Paramedic Taylor Fredericks, and Sergeant Jessica Dillard.
That is all of that?
I guess however you want to. I do just want to take a second to recognize all of these individuals. And for everyone else in the department, and for those watching on TV and for the commission, we definitely invite you to come by any of the EMS bases. And I know the fire departments extend the same invitation. We will be doing periodically throughout the month, there'll be lots of different celebrations, different dinners, and things of that sort. So anytime you see someone in uniform or in a shirt or out, you know, definitely thank them. Take this opportunity to recognize them for what they do. I promise you, I don't ever, I can't do it enough, but I know that y'all hear it a lot, but I can't tell you thank you too many times or too often. So anything that we can ever do for you, we appreciate you doing it for us.
Go ahead, Ethan. It's all right, Ethan.
Yeah, because like, all these folks got to pile in. So tall people head back, please.
I know, I feel safe with y'all.
Okay, sorry, I'm just trying to get the right angle.
Oh, Amber.
Okay, okay. Thank you for your service.
There was two people that called Chase and said, "Hey, why are you letting Turner outside? Why didn't you let his turn higher?" It is a very bad one. God willing, but they've never been forced to do that. No? Can't, can't. No, it's all the hours. He's saying, "We've never enforced it, we've never done anything." All kinds of stuff been done, done, like, wasn't supposed to be done.
Yeah, that's. He blew me in. Teenage is my first cousin, and Taylor's my second cousin. Because Taylor's the paramedic.
Okay, yeah. You seen my note about Mayor Davis?
That's good, good recognition.
That'd be fun, walking in blazing.
That was a good recognition for you, that was good. I liked that. I'm glad we're doing that.
You all ready to go?
Oh, yeah.
I appreciate it, thank you. Be good. Thank you for that.
As the mass exodus occurs, we'll continue on with our business at hand. Thank you again for staying with us, all those that are still here. Our next item on our agenda is a proclamation. This is a special proclamation, if you will, because it is for our clerks to the Board of County Commissioners Week, and in recognition of that, for our clerk, Abby Rich. And so I have that proclamation that I'm going to read before we take a motion to adopt. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas it is imperative to the democratic process that a well-informed citizenry participates in the operation of their local government, and whereas the office of the clerk to the board provides a communication link between the citizens, the local governing body and administrative departments, and local government partners, and whereas the position of clerk is one of the oldest in local government, dating at least to biblical times and whose term has long been associated with the written word, so it is that modern-day clerks are official record keepers for their counties. And whereas North Carolina law requires every board of county commissioners to appoint a clerk, and the clerk continues in that position at the pleasure of the board, and whereas the clerk's most significant statutory duties concern the preparation, filing, and safeguarding of local government records, but the statutory duties constitute only a portion of what the clerk actually does, and whereas the clerk plays a vital role in county government and provides the written record needed to ensure that the board is accountable to the county's citizens and to other public and private officials. And whereas the clerk is sometimes described as the hub of the wheel in the local government because of the central work that the clerk plays in the government's communication network. And whereas, as local government becomes larger and more complicated, the clerk's roles as a professional, dispassionate provider of information to citizens, government officials, and media becomes more and more important. And whereas clerks have the opportunity to participate in the North Carolina Association of County Clerks, a very active professional association of public officials dedicated to improving the professional competency of clerks through regular, regional, and statewide educational opportunities. And whereas in cooperation with the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, School of Government, and International Institute of Municipal Clerks, the North Carolina Association of County Clerks helps to sponsor a nationally-recognized examination-based certification program that culminates in the receipt of a designation of certified municipal clerk. And whereas in addition, the North Carolina Association of County Clerks and the School of Government sponsor state certification programs leading to the designation of North Carolina Certified County Clerk, as well as opportunities for experienced clerks to obtain the continuing professional education needed to remain state-certified or to earn an advanced master's clerk designation. And whereas in addition to conducting educational programs, the North Carolina Association of County Clerks also directly assist clerks on the job with mentoring programs to provide guidance to assistants, the clerks, in their day-to-day work. And whereas clerks, upon their own initiative, participate in these certification and education programs, including annual meetings of the North Carolina Association of County Clerks and the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, which not only improve the operation of their office, but through their achievements and awards bring favorable publicity to the counties in which they serve. And whereas the clerks are involved at state level, as well as a potential legislative and other matters of interest, and whereas although clerks work for the boards of county commissioners, they truly provide public service. Now, therefore, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize the week of April 30th through May 6th as clerks to the Boards of County Commissioners Week, and extends our appreciation to our county clerk and the board, Abby Rich, and to all county clerks of vital services they perform in their exemplary dedication to the county that they represent. Adopted this the 8th day of May 2023, do I hear a motion that we adopt the proclamation?
I make a motion we adopt a proclamation for the Board of County, I mean, Clerks Week.
Please don't ask me to read it again.
Could you read that one more time? I didn't hear it all. Well, I figured Dino must have wrote that.
Oh, me. So anyway, do I have any other discussion or comment? I just want to say, Abby, we appreciate you and everything you do for us. And it doesn't go unnoticed, and we don't get to thank you often enough, but we do appreciate it. And it's our honor to recognize County Clerks Week, and especially our county clerk, Abby Rich. So with that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So thank you again. All right, next we have another proclamation for Older Americans Month. And Will Wakefield, our DSS Director's here, and he's brought back up.
I have, evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Mr. County Manager.
Thank you for this time. I have with me Beverly Rupert, who is our Lead Supervisor for our Adult Services Area. And so we thank you for this time to recognize May as Older Americans Month. And Beverly's going to read the proclamation, but I did want to mention that on Friday, we had Celebration of Life. And Celebration of Life is an event that we have for individuals who are, we say, 60 and better in Caldwell County. And we have done that, is it 51 years?
Our 50th year, we didn't get to have it because of COVID.
Okay, so.
This was our 50th.
Yes, this would have been the 50th year, and we haven't had it since 2019. So we were glad to get back to having our full event with food and entertainment, information for those individuals who come. And so had a really good time with a couple hundred of our closest friends. And people were enjoying their time out. They were listening to music, they were dancing. Appreciate Commissioner Potter and Commissioner Branch coming. And we did not get pictures of them dancing, but next time we are going to try and do that. But we did have a wonderful time celebrating these individuals and their lives and what they do now, and what they have certainly done in the past, and what they will continue to do. Beverly and her staff, and some other staff within the agency, and some community partners, put this together and did an excellent job, really worked hard. It takes a lot of time and effort, and so I certainly thank her and those folks. So Beverly, if you'd like to read the proclamation.
I do want to say one thing about Celebration Life. It was so nice to see so many county agencies represented. I don't know if Mr. Potter or Mr. Branch got to go into the booth room, but we had the Health Department there, we had Restart, community paramedics, the veterans, Medicaid, and I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody else, but it was nice to see all of our county agencies represented there, too. So, okay, proclamation for Older Americans Month, May 2023. Whereas Caldwell County includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas Caldwell County benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas Caldwell County recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults who may need to make choices about how they age. And whereas Caldwell County can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now, therefore, we, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging.
All right, so hearing the proclamation was a pleasure of the board in adopting it this evening.
I figured everybody's going to look at me.
Go ahead, since you're the senior citizen.
Elder statesman.
I'd like to approve this proclamation, and, you know, I went down there and took my mom on a date. That's bad when I'm old enough to get in and take my mom on a date down there. So it was a.
To a senior citizen event.
Yeah. It worked out well for both of us. Had really good food, good entertainment, great. You know, Bob Enson was there playing music, it was awesome, a lot of entities there. It was a great time, and, you know, them old people enjoyed it there.
Well, you know, we had this.
I appreciate you doing that.
We had the CIS kids there, the communities and schools, and I think they had just as much fun helping.
I'd like to go ahead and adopt this proclamation of May for Older Americans. I would like to go ahead and adopt this proclamation of, uh, May for Older Americans Month, so.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that carries unanimously, so thank you again, and I thank you for everything you're doing for our, uh, older population.
Thank you.
We're all members, almost.
Well, we're all gonna be there one day, hopefully.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to, uh, our consent agenda for this evening, so our county manager, uh, Mr. Donald Duncan's going to lead us through that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have budget revision for the Cages Mountain EMS base. Uh, this is established in the CPO, moving fifteen thousand dollars over there to, uh, do a, complete a survey, and if there's any other geotechnical or closing work that we need to do, it's probably going to come in at around twelve, thirteen thousand is the estimate. We're able to get, save a little bit of money because we were able to find the old survey and easement maps, so it should be pretty quick. They've already been on site, waiting to get the final plan for that, so we can then turn that over to whoever we select as a general contractor and. Uh, we also have a budget revision for, uh, and to establish capital project works for Gaver Green Industrial Park, moving the four hundred thousand dollars out of the, uh, purchasing line item, so you've already spent that money and adding another fifty for environmental services and cleanup of organics and VOCs. Most of our staff, between us and the municipality and sawmills, already removing that from the site and taking care of it, but this is if we need to have any contracted services in case we run across something that we didn't anticipate. The phase one environmental has already identified everything, uh, everything that was in containers has been removed from the site and disposed of properly, so now this is just taking care of those massive piles of wood debris, and we're actually going to be able to reuse that at both of the landfills. You can put that down as a path, uh, because the landfills are soft, so if you use stone, it'll sink. The wood debris you can drive over top of, and it floats on top, so we can put it to good use. Uh, also, next on the agenda, you have the reappointment of the nine members of the LEPC board. They haven't been done in some time, and they're past due. This is one of the things that our county clerk has caught in getting us up to sta- up to date on Jordan Kramer with UNC Healthcare, Frank Gordon with Community Group, Brendan Jacks with JBS, Reed Roper at MDI, Aaron Burwick at RPM, Robin Nichols Duke Energy, Gary Sparks Hazmat, private contractor with Stitt, uh, Stack, excuse me, uh, John Rogers, a corporate member, and Patty Nelson with Greenway Transportation. Uh, they've all agreed to continue to serve. Also on the agenda, you have a consent to release and dispose of real property, uh, anytime the school board decides to dispose of property, uh, the county commissioners have right of first refusal essentially on that, so what you'd be doing is agreeing that it can go to the marketplace. This would be the old West Lenore Elementary, uh, could be a great redevelopment opportunity for the private sector. And also, we, uh, received our great grant award agreement, uh, our match on that is two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, uh, and then the private sector match equals that at two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, and then the feds are coming up with three million plus to establish nine hundred and forty-seven new broadband connections for southern Caldwell County and parts of Alexander County. Our match does not go toward Alexander Counties, but it is part of the project because they're in the same system. And that's all I have. Press approval in minutes, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
All right, uh, anybody have any questions?
One reminder for the Commissioners, you still have remaining about, uh, about seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars left toward great grant matches, uh, that we, we have, uh, reserved about a million, so this will only reduce that, so there's going to be two more rounds of these type of grants, so we don't know where we fall. I think we, we submitted with the private sector five separate applications, so throughout the year, more of those will be coming, so this isn't the, this isn't the first one, but, uh, it won't be the last.
All right. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the, this evening's consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the county manager has presented.
Any other comment or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that carries unanimously, and that leads us to our adjournment, so do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you again for being here and for tuning in, and hope you have a great evening.